City of Forest Park, city council meeting. Today is March 7th. The time is now a little after 8:00 PM. We've already done the pledge, so if we can have the clerk of council start by reading the roll.
Since my voice is gone, Tiki is going to read it.
Okay, Mr. K.
Adams.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
All council members are present. Moving on to the next portion, the adoption of minutes. Has every council member received the minutes? Are there any corrections or adjustments to be made? Hearing none. Moving on to presentations, there are none. Now moving on to the next, this is communications from the public. So this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are tape recorded for ease of transcription and comments are limited to five minutes. So at this point, any question that you have about anything in Forest Park, if you can please come to the podium, sign in, state your name, your address, and we will do our best to answer.
Yes, my name is Will Littlejohn and I live at 10633 Bradbury Drive. When you had the picture up on the screen here, you were talking about the water basin and I think Mr. Gray was saying that it backs up to his place on Brunner. Okay, if you go towards Versale's apartment, that there's a hill. And that hill runs into Bradbury. It drains down the hill. And when the water drains down the hill, about maybe what 15 years ago, we had a heavy storm and it drained into some backyards on Bradbury Drive. So how is that water basin going to affect the houses on Bradbury? That's my question.
Yeah, Mr. Cristo or Mr. Anderson, if you would like to address Mr. Littlejohn's question.
It shouldn't, since that was actually coming off of the apartment property. I don't think it would change that. The whole idea, the tension is to keep the water on the property and release it slowly so that it doesn't flood other properties. We don't have the same kind of basin as for the Versailles apartments because they were built in 1970 and that was before those requirements. But the way that the direction of the flow of the water, it wouldn't reach, it wouldn't reach that part of Bradbury if you're talking about the part that before the, you know, essentially the right turn to Southland. If you're on that section, it wouldn't.
Well, what I'm talking about is when the construction is there. Once you bring in those constructions and it's going, that earth is going to get loosened and that water's going to drain down that hill. The property you're talking about building on is actually, as you well know, is on a hill.
Yeah.
So what I'm concerned about, it just won't affect part of the neighborhood. It's going to affect, affect the whole neighborhood in that area. So I was just wondering what's going to prevent water from diverting to that part of the hill that will drain down on Bradbury? There's no water basin on that side.
Right, so we'd be approving a final grading plan that, that will ensure that that doesn't happen, but you know, by gravity, really.
Can we get that in writing? You said you can assure.
Hey, we're, we're going to get it in.
Now, nobody will remember you said I assure that and my property is going to be devalued if I try to sell that house.
Right now on that site, there is no stormwater management. All that water runs off at Wilf's. So actually by developing that property and installing this, it will have stormwater management. Right now it has nothing, so it actually will improve the water control. Right now it's just a hillside, everything runs down the hill, there's no engineering done on it. We'll actually improve the situation. Also, when we start construction, we have to do a SWIP plan, which is a stormwater management plan. And during construction, EPA is all over us, we have to make sure we keep all the water and all that broaching onsite. So we'll actually construct that because we have to, anything we disturb, we have to manage it and we have to construct basins so we keep all the water on the site. So that's all regulatory and that's all the city will require is to get all their permits and EPA before we be able to start construction, be one of the first things we do.
My name is Charles Brown and I live at 10629 Bradbury. I hear you, he's near talking about what the water won't do. I moved over down to Bradbury in 1974. All that water come from the school and apartment come down that hill. In my backyard, we a foot deep in water. Nobody took care of it, but Forest Park did put a catch basin there to catch the water. You sit there and say what you're going to do, but nobody never do anything. I have one problem with it. Is the housing going to be built for a senior citizen or who, or who is going to be built for? For seniors or family with kids?
I can answer that. I think the houses are going to be, be built for anybody that want to buy the houses. It's just going to be different. There are going to be some one level houses and some three stories from the back. So it's for anybody. It's not a senior citizen, it won't be a senior, just a senior citizen community.
For kids, people with kids.
Yes.
Well, I asked you that because what are the kids going to do? I moved out here in 1967. The kids don't have anything to do. What, what, what does the city of Forest Park doing for the kids? I tell you the truth, when my grandkids come up here, I had to take them to Fairfield for a swimming pool. And you're talking about building a housing, you're not doing anything for the kids. I tell you the truth, if I yawned and started that, I wouldn't move out here. And about the water, don't tell them nothing about that water. Water come from the school. I lived on Bradbury. From the apartments and the school. It jumped the ditch, Littlejohn can tell you. But Forest Park did, I kept getting on Forest Park by the water they did for the catch basin run to the street. And then you're talking about a place where the whole water, you know, your whole water, you know what going to happen? Mosquitoes. The people on my street, now I got kids.
Mr. Reynolds, really quick, really quick. Your concerns are duly noted, but just for the sake of time and for everyone else who asks questions, we do have to continue to move on. But everything you said is a, believe me, it is a priority, a top priority for the city. We don't want anyone's backyard to be flooded. We certainly don't want multiple mosquitoes to be attracted either, but we do thank you and appreciate you for your time. Really quick, Ms. Adams.
Mr. Cristo and Mr. Littlejohn were able to elaborate more on what my concerns were. Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much for sharing your concerns. We hear you loud and clear. And thank you for signing the board, but they were able to address my initial thoughts.
I think, so, and maybe just a point of a little bit of clarification, so this, the storm basin, you said that is going to be somewhat of a help to the water that's runoff from the Versailles apartments as well? No?
Just to manage just what's on our site.
They'll only manage what's on.
That's designed just for our site.
Okay, I thought, I thought.
Is it, are there any other comments from the public?
Mr. Weir, before you, as you walk to the podium, I don't want to impose my thoughts or put words in anyone's mouth, but I believe the residents are wanting to know that there is some guarantee that their properties will not be affected by the development of this property, of this new property because of water and flooding. And I think that, I hope that possibly there could be something given, written, understood that surrounding properties will not be affected by the water. We all know water can be very detrimental and if you've been here since 1973, you know, you have, or 74, that's a legitimate concern if you've had it happen before. And then to say that we're going to be responsible for our side, well, if you live on the other side, that's scary. So I think if I'm, don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, so please forgive me if I am, but I think that's what the residents are wanting to know. They are wanting to hear it be said and it be in writing or however, that their property will not be affected by the water or the mosquitoes or whatnot.
Can I just say one thing? And I'm not, I'm just going to tell you my experience. I'm not saying that I'm for this or against it.
Just really quick.
I live, my house is built, the lot right next to my house where I live now is a detention basin. And I've been there 20 plus years and I have not had one single problem with it. It is a detention basin. The water does not stay or stand in that particular basin. And my house is right there, that lot, there's no house next to me. I'm sorry.
We just don't want to go back and forth, but if you, you do live in Mill Road Station, correct?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Weirs, if you can just give your comment.
I have a different subject to raise for a conversation with the board, with the council. I'm going to preface my remarks by just saying that the former mayor, Chuck Johnson, inaugurated a series of once a month moment for history presentations by historical society members, each ideally to take no more than five minutes in the communications from the public section of the council agenda. The practice was suspended the last two years due to COVID. Tonight, I will restart the practice with a presentation on Forest Park rebranding. Private conversations with Mayor Aaron Brown and the state of the city talk by the city manager stirred me thinking about contributing to this project. Because Mayor Brown and Reggie Sylvester have been council members only two years and Travina Adams and Terrence Harrison are just beginning their council terms, I thought it might be timely to review the origin of the existing brand. It wasn't called a brand when it came into being over 40 years ago and its DNA really traces to 1965. Nonetheless, I have come to think of Forest Park's brand as 21st Century City, a phrase created by Canard Chip Henderson in private conversation with me in 2016. I have given to Sally Boyd eight copies for council members and the city manager of a document addressing the question, what is Forest Park's existing brand and its building blocks? Forest Park population figures for 2020 confirm that we can legitimately claim to be something other than a ghetto or a sundown city, both of which were assessments of us by ill-informed academic historian Zane Miller in 1981 and James Lowen in 2005. A fourth of our population in Forest Park is now other, that is, neither white nor black, which is more than double what it was in 2010, triple what it was in 2010 times what it was in 1990. Open and welcoming, arguably, what we are seen to be by home-seeking outsiders. This justifies the thought that we are a 21st century city, in my humble opinion. Before yielding to the next speaker, however, I want to point out that there are other captured documents showing our image. One of them is called Hidden Treasures and the other is called A Brief History of the City of Forest Park. These are developments in the hands of your Forest Park Historical Society and available on demand for inspection by anyone interested. That completes my remarks.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other residents who would like to come up and address council? And please, just for the sake of time, limit it to five minutes and we do want to keep everything as civil as possible, so.
I'm writing down my information. Sorry, I have a long street name.
No, you're fine.
Teresa Rodriguez, 780 Evangeline Road, again. I would like to know, how will you keep people from parking or stopping in front of these residences like they do in front of the apartments on Northland? I run into this constantly. They have parking in the back, but they stop or they pull up in the grass. And that, that will be an issue at this site. Another question, why are the townhomes starting at 340,000 versus a new development I just saw on Trulia today that's out near East Gate off of 32? And they're listed at their, the exact same thing. The basement or the bottom is parking and then two-story townhome, they're starting at just 265. For this side of town, I don't see how you're going to be able to get anybody attracted to 340 plus when the homes are only selling for around 200. And that's a concern of mine. And also, like somebody else stated, what are the, what do we have to offer these families? I grew up here. I moved here in 1968 with my family. We had soccer leagues, we had baseball leagues, we had softball leagues, we had tennis lessons, we had basketball. I mean, we had so much. And that's another thing, there's a basketball court left over from the swim club that is constantly used. Where are those people going to be able to play basketball now? So we need activities for the community to keep the kids out of trouble, to keep the kids entertained, get them involved in sports. There's nowhere that, we lived at the swim club. That's not an option anymore. And I just, I'm concerned about the community. We're the second largest community, you know, city. We need to really think about what attracts. And let's see, I think that's it.
Well, I appreciate that, Ms. Teresa. Just really quick, if I can jump, jump in to answer a portion of that, we still have soccer leagues and softball and basketball and signups are actually happening for baseball as we speak. We are looking for coaches, we are looking for people to be trained as referees in soccer, but not to point blame or anything, we are looking for people to sign up. A lot of people don't want to sign up, you know, and volunteer their time as, as much as they used to, but that doesn't stop us from trying, that doesn't stop us from offering them. And this is exactly the, the reason that I, you know, I can't speak for everybody, but a lot of us ran for council. We want to have that community feel where your kids can grow up in a safe environment and thrive and, and really have activities that they can be engaged in. But those things are still happening, the city is actively planning those and we, if you know anyone who, or if you, or your children want to sign up for them, please, you know, call the city, find out what's available. If you would like to sign up and volunteer your time, please do that as well because we're looking for people. I don't know. Whoa, I don't know, Don, if you could speak to that just really, really quickly and we'll just move on after this.
We do it mainly through Facebook and again, we're trying to make sure we hit all the, all the communication channels. Website, of course, Facebook, posters, banners, things like that. But yeah, we pass them out to schools. So we try and hit all the channels that we can. And really it's, you're absolutely right, it used to be the way it was. And I was the same way. I mean, I grew up at the pool and grew up playing summer, whatever, whatever was in season. But there's a lot, a lot of kids aren't doing that these days and it's hard to, that's, that's the hard part of it is that a lot of it is structured, specific, you know, leagues that travel that are more regional teams than just, you know, six kids, six teams or seven teams or eight teams in a, in a little league in Forest Park. You know, you have one kind of big team that goes everywhere and they play other cities. So a lot of kids are, at least the ones, a lot of the ones, you know, we talked to, and it's not for every kid, a lot of, a lot of the parents just don't have the time to take their kids to these practices and to these, you know, and.
And COVID has impacted a lot of people's like outdoor engagement, but that's why we want, you know, to get the word out and we want all of you to spread the word as well. With, just really quick, regards to your other question, Sharon Road is going to remain an active road and, you know, we'll, I can imagine we'll make sure no one is, is parking in front of, you know, those homes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, on your other issue with the community center, that, you know, this, that's a priority that's kind of, that's what they talked about. And this, this actual development in turn with other developments as well will, are geared toward providing us the opportunity and the funding levels to address that in this community. This creates a significant amount of, of revenue for the city. The city's not building this, this is, this is a private development. We're not building the houses. They've made the studies and determined what the price levels are, so, you know, they've, they've decided, they've made that determination as to what, what the market will bear. I think they're probably right. I hate to say that, you're going to make, you know, you'll do well. Not that I hate to say that they won't be able to sell. I just hate to see houses so expensive these days. And, but that's what they're going for out in the open market and they go like that. I mean, I looked in the, I looked on the real estate ads this weekend, on Friday, you know, I keep track of them. And by today, everyone but one was already pending. And there were five new ones.
Yeah.
They, they go so fast.
Yeah, and I imagine as, as we get closer to, you know, the groundbreaking and building with, you know, lumber futures and, and things like that nature, they could go back and readjust the prices if, if the market does a correction. Mr. Anderson, do you want to say something really quick?
Yeah. You know, with every driveway comes a curb cut and that's an opportunity for someone to get onto the grass area that without, you know, banging up their wheels. Where you don't have the driveways along Waycross and Sharon, that curb functions as a barrier. So that's something that in terms of the concern about what might happen, there's really lots of an opportunity, you don't have the cars parked in front of these, these units on those, on those edges.
And since there is planned to be an HOA in place, I imagine they'll, they'll definitely have some stringent rules about that. But if you could just limit it to five minutes, just.
I have more things, but two minutes.
Okay, yeah, yeah, go ahead, have at it.
Again, Carlos Gray, that's from 630 Brunner. We were talking about roads, everyone has been talking about roads, and from Southland Road to Waycross Road, it seems as though you just need to put down the red, yellow and green lights for drag strip because people come from Southland up to Brunner, sometimes doing 65 miles an hour. I mean, that stop sign at Bradbury, it almost shakes because people are going by it so fast. And there are a lot of children who live right in that area. Something has to be done. Seriously has to be done there because.
The police department look at that and how to become a targeted area.
Yeah, we should look at that.
Make sure that, that we do that for you folks.
We should look at that. Okay, thanks for that.
That's, that's important that we can have that.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that, but we.
We appreciate you coming.
Yeah, because this.
We really do. We never have this.
Yeah, we don't, we, we like when people show up, so, because normally it's very empty and we appreciate you all for being so engaged.
My name is Loretta Allen and I want to piggy, oh, 641 Waycross. My mother has lived in Forest Park for 40 years and I moved in with her in 2017. Just what Mr. Carlos is saying, Waycross Road is the same way. If they don't come down Southland, they come up Waycross Road. So, and then they revving it up. So all times of day and night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Waycross where?
From, they actually, they actually start down past Brunner, down in the cul-de-sac and come on up. But it's not a cul-de-sac down there, it's, but at the very bottom of Waycross and rev coming up. Yes.
I'm going to throw trash out the window when they.
Thank you.
I'll promise you that I'll have our police department.
Okay.
Take a look at that and see what we can do to slow things down.
They throw trash out the window too. They get to the stop sign.
Okay.
That's crazy.
Okay, thank you. Me again. Teresa Rodriguez, 780 Evangeline. Um, I, we also can hear lots of speeding cars, especially late at night, coming down Sharon Road from, I guess, Wenton, racing down that hill, racing up either Sharon or tearing onto Northland. Hear it late at night all the time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. As we close out the communications from the public section, I do want to say I appreciate everyone for, for showing up. We really normally do not have as many people show up to a council meeting, so it is kind of like a breath of fresh air because you're our boss and we appreciate your input. Everything that you say that you want, we try our best to make that happen. So continue to hold your elected officials accountable and we will do our best to bring you the things that you want to make sure our community continues to grow and thrives. At this time, we're going to go through the rest of our council meeting. You are not obligated to stay, so if you have anything else, if you want to get to dinner or just something a lot more entertaining than us, feel free to just duck out before we begin the next section. Thank you, Mr. Weirs.
That restaurant does need to be on Forest Park.
But we do appreciate you for coming.
Please continue to come to the council meetings.
Please, yeah.
As you all exit out, please continue to come so that your voice can be heard.
Okay, moving on to our next item on the agenda and it is going to be reports from council members, starting with council member Adams.
No, sir, I don't have a report at this time, but I would like to just echo to, to our residents that are here today and those that are watching, please continue to come to the council meetings. Since I've been elected, I've only known it to be one or two people sitting here in the audience. I do not take your concerns lightly. We do not, as a council, take your concerns lightly. We really need you to come. We need to know what it is that you want for the city so that we can respond. I won't know if you don't come, we won't know if you don't come. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I'm telling you, we need you here at the council meetings. We need you here at the council meetings. Please, you voted for us, hold us accountable. If you didn't vote for us, let us earn your vote next time. But hold us accountable and tell us what you want and what you need.
All right, thank you, council member Adams. I only have two items on the work, on the next week's work session. Do you have any items to add to that agenda?
No, sir, no items to add to the work session. The city manager and I will talk more about our youth, intergenerational and youth achievements.
I do remember that. All right, moving on to council member Clark.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I do have to report that the minority community business initiative through Forest Park has decided, well, we have not decided, but the community has decided upon a, a black business for the month of February for our black business spotlight. It is I Repair Plus and so that will be, that presentation will be at our next council meeting and then, of course, we'll go to that person's business in order to take a, take a photo and share that. So we're excited about that. That is our second annual time doing that. Our inaugural and first annual women's spotlight for women-owned businesses will also be determined at the end of this month and so nominations will begin next week. We did have a, we had our meeting last Wednesday and Robert Bell, who is. Uh, we did have a, um, we had our meeting last Wednesday and Robert Bell, who is the Diversity and Inclusion um, Director for Hamilton, the um, Hamilton County, came, offered some really great um, you know, words of advice and shared with us some inclusive practices and equity and how to extend that, and also how to um, you know, we can be um, better stewards of that and making sure that those are the practices that we're having, so um, I'll be um, or we'll be sharing those, um, sharing those notes with council at our work session.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark, and I don't have any items on the uh, work session agenda, do you have any to add?
I do not, sir.
All right, next is Councilmember uh, Harrison.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report, but I am proud to announce that we do have three individuals interested in sitting on board, we have the applications, uh, so we will be sitting down and interviewing those interve- individuals soon.
Okay, and do you have any items to add to next week's work session?
Uh, not at this time.
All right, thank you. Moving on, uh, first Vice Mayor Hope.
I do not have a report tonight, neither do I have anything to add to the agenda for next week.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and second Vice Mayor, uh, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Doctor Moore, excuse me. You earned it, so I gotta put some respect on your name.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna remind the um, residents regarding our blessing box, which is sits right outside the fire station, so if you wanna donate any items to our community, um, please put it in that box, uh, if the community needs any items from the box, please take what you need, and so um, we're very excited about our blessing block, uh, blessing box, and so um, please make sure that we um, donate items if you need it and, and receive items if you need it.
Okay, and do you have any uh, items to add to the next week's work session?
Uh, I have some public works.
Public works? Okay. All right, uh, next is going to be Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report to uh, to give at this time.
And do you have any items to add to the work session?
Nothing to add, but just uh, we commented uh, at our last meeting on the update on our, our road projects.
Oh, yes, actually, I do have that as a, as listed for you, mm-hmm.
You know, get uh, elaborate point on what the city is actually looking at doing for some of the road uh, repairs and redos throughout uh, the city.
Yeah, so the update on road projects will be good, uh, to specifically as it relates to the council members' uh, concerns, so um, thank you for that. And that concludes our reports from uh, council members, moving on to uh, item number seven, which is the city manager's report, Don.
I'll try and keep it pretty quick, it's Sally and I both lost our voices, we've been talking too much lately. Um, I wanted to get, let everyone know that uh, May seventh will be the citywide yard sale, so if you need, if you wanna participate in that, go to our website, um, sign up and uh, get on the list, and uh, so that'll be May seventh. The, uh, we're also getting uh, ready to have a prescription or a, a drug drop off an old prescription, where our police department will uh, take your old drugs and make sure that they get uh, disposed of properly, that's gonna be April thirtieth, so have more information about that coming up. One of the things that, that I wanna make sure that uh, I've announced as previously, but I wanna make sure that we, you know, we have some new faces here and make sure that uh, the city council, you know, is aware of everything, so um, remind everyone that we did, we just did hire six new firemen, our fire persons, um, we had three replacements, where we had lost three to other departments, uh, so we replaced three, but we also increased the force by three brand-new uh, full-time firemen, so we've increased the number of firemen within the city by three, and we anticipate doing that, three a year over the next two years, to uh, bringing the number of full-time professional firefighters within the city up to a almost uh, um, a, a much, a much more desirable level, which will increase the safety not only for the fire department, the individuals who respond, but also for the citizens as well. These will be firemen and paramedics uh, to uh, to run the ambulances as well. In addition to that, uh, we, we announced that we recently started two new police, police officers, um, one we hired last year, she just graduated from the uh, or earlier this year, she just graduated from the academy and her first week, first day was about uh, three weeks ago, and we also hired another uh, from the city of uh, St. Bernard, and uh, they, she started about two weeks ago, so we've uh, added two police officers to our police force, again with a commitment toward uh, keeping their ci- the city safe and uh, and doing some of the things that we need to do to uh, uh, be uh, certified with our CLIA, we're, we have the gold standard going through our reprocessing again and our recertification, and um, our commitment to community-oriented policing. I wanna also note that uh, those two police officers are, are both women, and again, it's our commitment to uh, commu- um, toward uh, uh, diversity of hiring within our, within our, uh, within our city. We also are beginning the, the search for a part-time senior coordinator, senior center coordinator, so if anybody knows anyone, that'll be posted shortly, we're looking for someone to begin uh, between the twenty-five and third, and twenty-nine hours a week uh, for a uh, part-time position in our senior center, and of course, we are always looking for folks in the, in the uh, in the summertime, if somebody needs part-time help in our public works department, so if you know some, some young, young folks or anybody really, that uh, once is looking for a, a position in the summer, um, pass our name along to them, again, they can apply, everybody can apply online, and uh, and uh, hopefully we'll have enough folks to uh, continue to clean the parks and clean the roadways and so forth, so uh, for streets, you'll see some um, some activity with regards to, to that over the next couple of months. We did receive uh, some substantial grants from Sorda, so we'll be redoing Wenton Road and parts of Kempa around the year, so uh, look for that. The um, and other, we'll also do some of the interior streets as well, they'll be, they'll be, uh, we're looking at, trying to do an interior road program again this year, so those streets will be announced, we're in the process right now of um, grading those streets, we go through a pavement condition uh, grading, which basically looks at all the streets and determines which are the most uh, in need of repair and what types of repairs they would need, so that process is going on long, we'll have the list here shortly, and we'll uh, come up with a program that we'll announce to the public, so uh, but we do, we go through it and we, it's, we pick um, the streets that are really, that we, that uh, really need to be repaired the most, everybody thinks their street is the worst.
Yeah.
My street's the worst, I agree, but uh, but we try and keep it, that's a fairly scientific process where we grade the streets and try and repair the ones that are really in the, in the most need, so if anybody has any um, any questions, be glad to answer any of the ones asked.
Do any council members have any questions for uh, city manager? Yeah, really, really quick, Don, um, I know you are going through a, a process with the city on the street grading, but is there any opportunity for community input, like people can submit pictures or something to the city, uh, 'cause I got a pothole the size of Texas, and I, I think the city needs to, to get on.
Well, we, uh, send me the pothole.
Yeah.
The uh, we are in the process of fixing potholes.
Yeah.
Bear with us, this, this ice event actually um-
Yeah.
-took its toll on our streets, so we're out there fixing those potholes, those are, you know, designed to last, but um, yes, obviously, anybody that has any concerns or has a street or thinks theirs need some special attention, please let us know, just submit it either to one of your council members, the mayor can submit it to me, uh, call City Hall here and let us know, uh, but every, but we have um, uh, two engineers and our public works department, and two people from our public works department, um, are traveling every street and grading them as we speak, well, not tonight, but um, over the last couple, a couple of weeks, since the snow and the ice have been melted, they've been going out and grading the streets, so we hope to have that process done shortly for, for more permanent repair, some will get a complete repaving, some will get um, more of a crack filling, uh, depending on what, definitely, and those will add value and add years of life, so a lot of times we can do something that's not a complete redo, but it'll extend the life of the road for maybe seven to ten years, so we're trying to do the best we can and spend our money judiciously um, to, to basically correct all that, everything we can. Uh, you're technically not allowed to, individuals are not allowed to.
Yeah, I was saying, uh-
Please don't repair a pothole unless, unless don't tell us about it.
No, no.
You tell us-
He did a good job on that one.
You tell me.
Yeah, mister.
We have no knowledge of him repairing any potholes.
City manager?
But yes, if you have one, please let us know.
Yes.
I have a question.
Senator Adams.
Um, with the new uh, firefighters that we have and our new police officers, is there opportunity for the community to meet these new guardians of our city?
They'll be, um, we, we'll bring them in and introduce them at, at a council meeting.
Okay, wonderful.
The uh, I think the mayor, you've sworn in the two police officers.
Yeah, yeah.
And uh, we'll bring them in at a council, we just have to get everybody together.
Well, that was my report, Don, so you kinda gave that away, but-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, hopefully the community will get opportunity to meet those who are governing over them.
Yeah, yeah, we'll bring them in and uh, and we, and we're still actively searching for um, uh, more police and more fire um, at this time, so um, you know, we hope to be able to bring uh, more good news um, throughout the, throughout the summer.
All right, thanks, Don, and that concludes the city manager's report, uh, moving on uh, to the mayor's report, and that is me, so um, actually, I did have the opportunity to swear in uh, one of our new police officers, um, so that actually went smoothly. Um, our, our police actually work very hard, uh, we, we have a website where we recruit nationally, and people do have to take and pass the civil service commission, 'cause we want to make sure um, that uh, that is, uh, that our officers are in compliance with the values that we have in our community. Um, other than that, last year's um, Forest Park City Cycle and Walk Event, um, which was in August, we are in the beginning phases of planning that, um, one of the complaints last year, everyone said it was a really fun event, but it wasn't enough um, notification as a, a lead time, so um, the tentative date for that is going to be June eleventh, um, so that's tentative, so second week of June, but uh, so the second Saturday of June, I should say, uh, we're beginning the, the planning phases for, for that, and um, that's a part of that, that community, um, that community pride, having those events that people can come out, um, family, it's gonna be, it's not a race, it's not timed, uh, but these are family fun events, um, bikes will be uh, provided, but also if you don't have a bike, you can walk, so that is gonna be our second annual uh, this year, and that concludes my report, does anybody have any questions?
I'll tag, tag on to that, the uh, the Jazz Fest is coming back this year.
Yeah, and that's why we moved, we moved the date, 'cause the Jazz Fest is coming, our most popular event.
We'll be, uh, we'll be getting more information about it, but uh, it's very popular, everybody knows about it, most people, hopefully everybody's attended it, attended it, and we look forward to bringing that back this year.
Yeah.
And we'll be releasing the, some, some summer events uh, later on, uh, next week, I believe, to have some uh, some of the events that are going on this summer in the parks, whether that's food truck rallies, um, uh, music so forth, and try and uh, bring a, a lot of, again, family fun activities for the community to take part in, and we'll have a complete calendar on that for this summer.
Okay. All right, moving on to other reports, uh, first is going to be for our law, law director, uh, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I did have the opportunity to review and make some comments on the Miami University City of Forest Park um, memory anim of understanding, also, uh, I expressed an opinion regarding the use of House Bill fifty-one and remote meetings that the city's allowed to have for a limited period through June of this year. I reviewed um, on a request uh, for proposals, I, I reviewed an issue regarding disclosure of uh, intellectual property, I also had an opportunity for the police department to review a contract on their frontline security, and also had an opportunity for the police department to review the use of uh, old or dilapidated tasers and our donation of those tasers, um, that would be the end of my report unless there are any questions.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anybody have any questions for uh, the law director? Okay, moving on is, next is our clerk of council, Miss Sally Boyd.
I do not have a report this evening.
All right, thank you, uh, and that concludes our other reports, uh, moving on to item number ten, which is new business, and we have uh, one resolution on uh, the agenda, is there a motion, council member?
Yes, I would like to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, it would need to be read first.
It does need to be read in full?
Yes.
Yeah, I-
No, doesn't need to be read in full, it's, you can, it was posted.
But it's a short one, it's a very tiny one, so it's, it's, you can make a motion to suspend or you can read it.
Okay, well, if you can, uh, Miss Boyd, if you could read the, uh, the resolution in full, please.
If Takiya would read it full.
Oh, you have to, Takiya, just reserve your voice.
Read this whole, okay. Resolution number zero six dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution lifting the moratorium on zoning special exceptions, whereas resolution twenty-five dash twenty twenty-one placed a one hundred and eighty-day moratorium on new zoning special exceptions pending a study by the zoning administrator, and whereas the special exception study has been substantially completed, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, the moratorium on zoning special exceptions declared in resolution twenty-five dash twenty twenty-one is hereby terminated. Section two, the resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage. Is it? Oh, God, I was nervous.
Thank you. Is there, is there a motion on a resolution?
I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number zero dash twenty twenty-two.
Second. It's been moved improperly, second, is there any discussion, Council, Vice Mayor Hope?
Only this is a housekeeping item and simply uh, lift the moratorium and as you heard, and the um, and the resolution that was read, so I just urge adoption of uh, resolution number zero six dash twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, uh, let the clerk call the role on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is, I wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly, is this the one to be able to have our meetings via uh-
No, no.
Okay, I apologize, thank you.
No, no. Yeah, this is just for moratoriums on our special exceptions that are planned.
Thank you, I'm looking at the wrong one, thank you.
No, you're fine, uh, will the clerk call the role on the motion to adopt?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Sylvester? I'm sorry, Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
All right, motion passes seven zero, um, and there is one last item, is there a motion, uh, first Vice Mayor Hope?
Yes, I would like to ma- make a motion to allow the uh, mayor to convene meetings by means of video conference in lieu of regular in-person meetings pursuant to House Bill fifty-one effective until six thirty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second, is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, we can discuss it.
Wait, you have a question?
Well, my question is, if we convened new meetings on video, we just sat here and said to the committee, the community, we need y'all to come to community meetings, but now we're gonna switch it and say, oh, we're gonna do video, I think that's just, I, I, that doesn't make sense, we just pleaded and said, please come to community meetings, please come to community meetings, please come to community meetings, and now we're gonna put out something that says, oh, we're gonna do them by video.
Well, as I-
It does require a vote.
Well, it doesn't, it does require a vote, but let's have a discussion about it, so anyone that's getting ready to vote that may say yes, please consider that we just asked the community to come to the community council meetings, and if we vote for this to be video, then what was the purpose of begging people basically to say, hey, we really need you to come to the community council meetings?
Right, and uh, duly noted, but as I understand the motion to me, this is just a motion to allow, um, at my discretion and, and council's consensus, to allow uh, video, that doesn't mean that we're, all of them are going to automatically be it, but just to allow after we've discussed it.
And I caution you on your, I caution you on your allowance to have the meetings by video.
Yeah, just uh-
For consideration of us having-
Just a point of clarity, uh, John, if you can just uh, elaborate on like HB fifty-one.
Yeah, HB fifty-one was just recently passed, again, it's the coronavirus issue, and if a community feels that for health and safety of the community, they should do remote meetings, it allows for remote meetings as an exception to uh, the standard personal appearance meetings. Of course, if we do remote meetings, they are noticed to the public like any other regular meeting, and uh, the public is allowed to link into that conference so they can participate, and there was a community here in, in Hamilton County that, starting with the coronavirus and when everybody went remote, they kept a hybrid that- that they not only have the regular in-person meetings, which makes it official, but they also have a Zoom link every time to allow citizens to join the meeting by Zoom. And their last meeting, they had one hundred people on the Zoom link and that city's half the size of Forest Park.
Thank you. Thank you, John. But just to your to point, Ms. Adams, like I said, we will do a consensus amongst ourselves and discuss it, you know, with Don as it relates to how many agenda items that we will have as it comes up on a meeting and with regards to the guidance from the Health Department. If it if it is necessary that we feel that we have to do a virtual meeting, like John said, it'll still be posted. People will still have links to come to it, but for the most part, if it doesn't, if it isn't necessary for us to to have a virtual meeting, we won't. This motion is only with regards to allowing us to decide that if we're going to do it. So we'll play it back here, basically.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
None, thank you.
All right, can this be a vote, voice call vote, or is this a roll call?
Voice. It's a motion.
Oh, so so let it be known by the sound of voting aye on the motion to adopt?
Aye.
Aye, so.
Opposed.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, and then motion passes six-one. So that concludes that's the last item on the agenda and that concludes this council meeting. So we're just going to close it and end it out here, but I do want to say once again, thank you all for coming today. Please continue to hold us accountable. Please continue to look out for any news on this particular development along Waycross and Sharon or any further developments. But we are going to go ahead and end council meeting here. Any? Does does anybody have any other? Is it any other business come before the body? Any other business to come before the body? Oh, I've got to finish. Any other business to come before the body? Here and none? Council meeting closed. Sorry.